Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the school committee meeting of March 20th, 2025. At this time, I'll call to order and we'll begin with ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next will be the introduction of members. I'll start with you, Matt. Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillgallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Maya Gonye, Student Council President.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Welcome all, and we'll go next to the student representatives' report.
So as we speak, the annual Mr. BMR event is happening at the high school. Got a ton of great acts planned. As I was walking out of school yesterday, I saw a barbell with two teddy bears on either ends of it, so I wonder what's gonna go on with that. This past Thursday, our National Art Society had their empty bowl dinner, which, from what I've heard, is the biggest that it's been in a few years, and raised over $2,000 for the Blackstone Food Pantry at Divine Mercy. Our student council had 10 student representatives attend the MAS C State Conference in Hyannis two weeks ago, and I'm extremely grateful and honored to say that I did win the position of Secretary of the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. And I'm very grateful to be able to open up more doors for our school and to make change in the state.
Like the way you think.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And spring sports started this Tuesday, so we've got softball, we've got track, we've got a lacrosse co-op with Nipmuck, we've got tennis, got all of that going on, and games and meets are starting next week. In fact, softball, I just came from there right now, we've got our first game this coming Wednesday away at Millis. Our junior and senior prom is April 11th in Kirkberry Country Club in Lincoln, Rhode Island, and the last day to buy tickets is tomorrow. The sophomore class hosted the Underclassmen Spring Fling on March 7th, which had 8th, 9th, and 10th graders, and that was definitely a success. Senior fourth quarter internship applications are gonna be due on March 28th, so if you're senior and you wanna do fourth quarter internship, make sure to get that in. And students are starting to meet with their counselors to choose their courses for next year. So we're starting with upcoming seniors, then juniors, then sophomores, and we have a lot of new course offerings and pathway programs for next year. We have AP Government on the table, we've also got environmental and life science pathways along with zoology, watercolor too, and human child growth and development. So that is it for BMR right now.
Well, congratulations and thank you very much for that job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a lovely rest of your day.
There's no objection, we're going to take out of order under item A, under the superintendent's report, is the middle-of-the-year student performance data.
Thank you. Excellent. Good evening, everybody. We are really excited tonight to be presenting to our school committee and to our community an update on our student performance. As the committee knows, we spend a lot of our time looking at our student work, not just assessments, but the day-to-day work, and looking at different ways we can kinda quarter-turn or adjust things to make sure that we're meeting their needs. And tonight, we're gonna check in on that and hear a little bit about the progress we're making this school year. But this year, we're doing things a little bit different. We have invited some very important guests that we're gonna invite to come forward in just a quick minute to actually talk a little bit about the work that's happening in their classrooms. So tonight, we're gonna hear from two of our schools, from Millville Elementary and then from the middle school, and we have two of our finest students from Millville who have joined us in person that are going to share some of the, a little bit about their story with the school committee and the community after Mrs. Schaefer and I think Mrs. Vaughn, and I'm not sure if anyone else is gonna join us with, in our data discussion, from the staff. And in front of you, you have the slide deck that they'll be talking through, and then from there, we're gonna hear from the middle school, and our students from the middle school couldn't make it due to athletics and some other commitments, but they did make a video. The students made a video for the school committee and the community to hear directly from them, but we'll get to that in a moment. Welcome to Josie and Elijah, who are gonna be sharing a little bit about their journeys at Millville this year. And thank you, Ms. Schaefer and Ms. Vaughn, for putting this together, and of course, the parents for bringing your children here. I don't think they could drive here on their own yet, so.
So do you guys wanna tell them what grade you're in?
I'm in third grade.
I'm in second grade.
So Elijah has come to our district. Dad, in meetings, would we say this is three or four that you've come to when you come present for all the principals?
Yes.
I think this, the last one we just did this week, was his third, right?
Tuesday was my third. Today's my fourth.
And Josie's first time, we're getting her ready to take over and leading the third grade next year when she gets into third grade for her data presentation, so. So.
Oh, I got it right here.
All right, so as you know, we've spent a lot of work on early literacy the last, this is year three, I believe. With the past two years, we got a grant from the Department of Education, and this year we are working with the same consultant that we worked with last two years. You can see our STAR early literacy and reading data on the screen. We've had some nice growth in both of those areas. We still have things to do. Now you can see each one is by grade, so it's the BOY is the beginning of year and the middle of year is the second column. So we have, out of 270, 207 kids, 149 are currently at or above grade level in grade in the school. And then reading, you can see that as well. We've made 17 of our kiddos from the not meeting in reading have moved up, and you can see the big jump from meeting from 29 to 56. Now dibbles is another area that we're working on. So a little bit about dibbles, it's more of a fluency, so students have to do things in one minute. Stars untimed, so they get as long as they want. Dibbles is timed, so the goal of it is to work on fluency of letters and phrases and nonsense words, kinda like made-up words. And we've got some work to do in this area, but we have made some growth. We've moved 10 kids out of the well below, and we've got some moving into the below, and then we've got some, we've nine moved up to at, and then we have 64 kids above grade level for that. So again, the whole school.
This is measuring how many words the students can read in a minute, and then there's a particular number of words that they're expected to hit each time we measure that? So if we look at, go ahead.
So when you get, so kindergarten starts with letters, and they work on letters and letter sounds. Can they identify what sounds they make, and then it kind of builds up in skill? And then, as Dr. DeFalco was saying, it builds up as, and they have a minute, so each, like BOY is this goal they have to get to, MOY is this goal they have to get to, and they have all subtests. So each of those subtests have a goal inside of it. So, yeah, it's a little bit, it's nice, it's like five or six minutes to administer to all the kids, but it gives you a lot of information, which is really nice. And then our two friends up here are gonna talk a little bit about what strategies they've kind of learnt in the last couple of years for literacy, so either reading, reading and writing. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead.
In reading, we are learning for MCAS that you need to read the text at least twice to, the first time you read it, you get a gist of it, but when you read it the second time, you get like a main idea in your head. And my teacher says it's, you're, you can read it twice or more because she can't read it to you on the MCAS, so basically what she's saying is, read it to yourself more so that way you get more details.
What in writing? What strategies have you learnt to share in writing?
Oh, in writing, I learned how to do wraps, restate, answer, prove it, and sum it up. When I do wraps, it feels like I'm like a really good author.
And Josie, wanna talk about what strategy you've learned in reading and writing?
In reading, one example that helps me out is our adjective poster in the back of the room, and the starter words poster also in the back of the room. We also have a green book. If we don't know a word, the teacher will write it in our green book, and we build a word bank to go back and look if we need to. In reading, I have learned strategies to try, to sound out the words. If we do not know them, we can try and sound them out or break them up. Also, we can look for words when we read, like clues when we read about a certain story and you're writing about the story, you can look for clues and add facts about the story.
They have math stuff to share about too, but Mrs. Vaughn's gonna talk a little bit about the math data.
So this year, we decided to try something new with our math data. We used the HMH end-of-year assessment, and we're gonna do it three times a year. So we administered it at the beginning of the year, and what the teachers thought was either A, the students were clicking through very quickly if they did it online, and not really thinking about what was being asked, or B, they had, they had, they had, they just chose an answer, so they weren't thinking about it. So after we did our data and we looked at it, we said, do they really know what they know? Is it an educated guess, or do they know how to do it? So all the grade levels went ahead and redid the test, taken out as many of the multiple choice options as possible. So our second test, our middle-of-the-year, really wasn't comparing apples to apples because they saw the question and they had to fill in it. So it surprised a lot of our students. So we're hoping, so the data is, in kindergarten, we had 51 students above and 26 on level, and we have 20 still that are below level. So they still did fairly well for what we're doing.
So we probably tell, the bands, the below was up to 59% of the questions correct, the...
60 to 79.
60 to 79, and then 80 or above percent of the questions correct.
And just for clarification, so you're giving the end-of-year test?
Yes.
Three times, so that we would, we would assume the kids would...
Should not know it.
Probably in the beginning of the year, right? But it's also a good way, like a diagnostic, see what they do have, and see what they do understand already. So you can use that as well as an informative piece to help you kinda figure out where to go next.
Right, so in the middle of the year, we knew, they had taught explicitly about half of the units. So about half the questions were topics they've already covered, and the other half, they're still gonna go through to the end of the year. First grade, we had 11 move to above and 26 were on level. We still have 62 that we're working towards getting out from, to get up into the 60 and above. Second grade, we had 27 for middle, for MOY for above, 23 for on level, and we have about half, 50%, that still need that work. And then in third grade, we, this was probably our biggest disappointment, and I think it was our biggest upset to our kids not seeing multiple choice answers. They were very upset because they remembered. And they, they also took it online the first time, so this time they had paper, so they were, it was a very big change for them, let's just say. Only three were above, 18 were on level, and we still have 64 that we're working towards.
So three had no multiple choice in it, it was all the short answer.
Very minimal. And one thing we did find during our discussion, actually, with all the groups is that ST math, so some of the skills had not been taught yet, but ST math has given the kids some little like exposure to it. So playing the games that they're doing on the ST math has exposed them to some of the topics, and one of them was adding up to 10 for kindergarten. For example, they, the teacher's like, oh, I saw the kid doing, the kids doing that in Gigi when they had to put all the boots in the little tent frame, and so the kids are getting exposed to items, and they actually, there was a couple of questions that did really well with the exposure from the beginning of the year, too.
And it, it kinda makes sense with kindergarten doing so well because four out of the five classrooms have already hit 100% of puzzle completion, so they're moving forward with it at a more rapid pace than one, two, and three. So they had more exposure, so it looked like that worked for them with this test.
Please ask a quick question. What do you plan for the end of year? The taking out of the multiple choice, or you're going to keep it the way it was, MOY? Yes. They, they were saying, what does this mean? We didn't have to do this before, and we're like, well, you do now. Productive struggle is a lesson learned. We'll have to tell. At least have a comparison for it.
Yes, it will be apples to apples from mid to end.
Because the other piece that made us change it was that when the teachers were seeing on the original assessment to what they were seeing in class were not even close to each other. And they also talked about the level of complexity of the questions. Some of them asked more in-depth things, so that's kind of why we changed it, to make them think more and push them beyond that, so.
Do you wanna share a little bit what you learned in math, guys?
I think it's helpful to do repeated subtraction because when you do repeated subtraction, it's like you can subtract and subtract when you're doing division, and you can count, like when you're missing a fact, a factor, and you can subtract how many times it takes you to get from the number you're subtracting from to zero. And then you like count how many times you subtracted, and then it like, then you find the factor you're doing, and then...
They added much more to their notes when we had the...
Kids who like math in my class, like me, learn new things, and my teacher likes to do like these funny, funny things where like, we, she said, when we were doing perimeter, she said, well, my, my, she had, we had like an open shape and it was like this, and she said, my horses are getting out of there. So then, when she did like those funny examples, a lot of kids in my class like looked up and started to pay attention.
And Josie, how about you?
So some things that helped me in math are number games and drawings, and also cubes are strategies that I've learned to help me solve math problems. I use number games to count up and count down, and also add and subtract. And sometimes when you're in like your math book and the teacher wants you to do it on your own, she wants you to do it on your own to see what you have learned, and then when she checks it off, you see if you made a mistake or not, and then you could practice doing that, the thing that she circled, and work on it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So these are some of our next steps that we've come up with. The ST math, one of the things one of the grades was talking about is reassigning some of the skills, so things that the kids were taught about at the beginning of the year, they're reassigning them now to see how they do in ST math with those.
I'm also starting from a certain number versus starting from one and counting up because they have that root minimization, counting from one, but if you started a different number, they have to think of where they're going to next. So we're talking about that, and we're talking also about reading the problems carefully before you make, like read twice, like you had said, so that they know what's being asked before they just go ahead and start trying to solve a problem.
This is a glimpse of our special education data for early literacy and reading. And this, one of the things, and actually for both early, for special education and English language learners, we have actually started ensuring that our special education teachers and our English language teachers, they are attending our literacy training as well to make sure that they're getting the same training and same experience that our classroom teachers are getting. So, and the skill, and the students are being exposed to the same things. We're modifying what we're doing for both of the groups, but we are, they've actually had specific planning time, just reading intervention, special education, and English language learner teachers to actually plan for the students they're working with. So we've actually set that up so that they have that specific coaching and how to use materials with the different population of students that may need a little bit more modification.
And we also wanna take an opportunity to have those teachers also go into our classrooms and observe our classroom teachers and what they're doing, so they can see best practices and be able, maybe to bring that back into their classrooms.
And we do have some staff that have been doing this work for, the literacy work that we've been doing for several years, so really getting them into it. And then this is the math and the dibbles, and a similar picture in this.
And Christina, on these, and Mary, on these numbers, some of these kiddos are the same and some of them may be different.
Yes.
Because of students entering and exiting, especially with our L population. We've had a lot going out and a lot coming in, and the kids that are coming in are lower, so it's kinda hard to do apples to apples with this. We do have a lot of newcomers who are just learning language, so we can see that. So even though the numbers are similar, it may not necessarily mean the same students.
The same kids, exactly. This is our English language learner population. The reason, by the way, you're only seeing, for example, STAR early lit is technically only for K1, but some students cannot access the early, the reading assessment in grades two and three, so they do take it at the early literacy and in third grade because they are unable to access. And then second and third grade does the STAR reading. Again, our dibbles and our math. While we have made growth, it hasn't been the growth we wanted, so those are some things that we are still working on. And one of the things we did put in place this year was kindergarten tutoring, and at the preliminary data look, I actually was just showing them, our, I haven't, our dibbles and I went through and actually did all that. For the STAR early lit, the students started the year, we had, for students that were below grade level, so either the not meeting or the partially meeting, we had 61% of our tutoring population, the group that we're working right now before school tutoring, to 57%, and 43% students are now at the on or, on, just about on or above level. So we've had some from 38%, so we've had some growth, some nice growth. And the colors look awesome because we're, I think this is, you can kinda see it from here, but, so there's a lot of colors on, these are the two that we're looking at, so.
From 38% on level to 47% on level?
Yeah. On that subgroup of before school.
Just that small, small group.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, the before-school tutoring. And some of them have made as much as almost 150, 140 point growth from beginning of year to middle of year with the tutoring. It's three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for 45 minutes. And we started that nice and early in this.
We did, yeah.
So I'm excited to see what the end of the year looks like with that, like group of students, too.
The goal was to try to, to prevent that huge gap.
Right.
That starts in, frankly, before kindergarten, based on the preschool exposure kids have. So it's nice to see that we're able to move, it sounds like almost 10% of the kids from that tutoring.
And that started about October, so, and this was January, February, so you're looking at like three months of, of just work and they've made that much growth, so I'm excited to see what six, seven months of work, what that does.
And for the, for the early, our youngest learners, sometimes it's just more time on learning, like the kids just haven't had the exposure, particularly at, you know, five years old, five and six years old, if they haven't had the preschool or they were in daycare or something, they just need the time with the material and the teacher.
Exactly, so they're doing a lot of hands-on also with it, really focusing on building those skills. And then we talked about a lot of the next steps as we were kinda going through, focus area, practicing, allowing them to go in. Any questions?
Christina, your headlines around next steps are writing and fluency, is that...
Yes, so as you saw, a lot of our fluent, the dibble scores, those are things that we have to work on. The kids can do it on time, but we want to be more fluent because when you're taking, you know, an hour, and this is exaggeration, to read a passage, if you can take it less time, it's gonna be a lot, it's a lot less taxing on you. You're not as exhausted to read something. So they're comprehending it, we just need to get the speed up and the fluency up. The accuracy is there. When we were looking actually at the individual subtest, the accuracy is there, the speed is not. So that's what we need to work on. So that's when we had our professional development on Friday, on the 14th, we, one of the things we worked on was the literacy consultant had come in, and she worked with like K1 and then 2, 3, and they practiced breaking, using the dibbles data and breaking up their students into small groups, and practiced doing some of those drills for 15 minutes. They had a small group for 15 minutes, and they practiced a whole bunch of different fluency activities to kinda keep it going, so. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Josie wants to say something.
So if you're taking a phonics test, in our classroom, we may have things we've learned, they might be on the test, so the things we learned or the things we went over are on the phonics walls, and you can go up and look at the, at the walls, and the things we went over, she has them on the, as cards, and she puts them on the walls, so it's easy to see it, and that is what helps me on the phonics test.
What's the big thing you said to me about using your what in the classroom? Using your classroom re, I use the big word, but you said all...
Resources.
Yeah, the posters and resources that the teachers use and visuals they put in the classroom for you guys, right?
So I have a question for Josie, I had one for Elijah, but Josie, I was gonna ask you, you just brought up that phonics wall. I've been in the classroom, so I know what it is, but I'm not quite sure how well, how many of our school committee members have been in the classroom, so what kind of things are on that phonics wall? So if they walked in, what would they see?
So when you walk in, you would, if, when you look at the phonics wall, you would see like phonics stuff on a certain wall, like CKs and digraphs and vowels and like OIs and OIs and...
The vowel teams?
And, yeah, and vowel teams and EAs and things that go with Es, As, and Ys and Os.
And I have a question for Elijah. So you were talking about, and I didn't, I did not learn how to divide like this, so you mentioned subtracting, so I wanna make sure I get this right. So if I had 20 divided by 5, I would subtract 5, and if there's more left, I would subtract 5 again, right? And if I had more left, I'd subtract 5 again, right?
Yeah.
And if I subtracted the last time and there was nothing left, I would say, oh, I subtracted four times, right? So I would say 20 divided by 5 is 4?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And that's the method you like?
Sounds so much easier.
I never learned that. I just wanted to make sure I got that right. Thank you for sharing that.
Josie, have you learned that yet in second grade? The repeated sub, not yet? It's coming.
Now you know it's repeated addition, I bet, because you guys are gonna start to get ready for multiplication.
Yeah, it's like repeated sub, it's like repeated addition, but it's like subtraction.
Just so both of you know, we are looking for a middle school reading interventionist and math interventionist, and I think we may have found the two individuals to be tutoring our middle schoolers in math.
Reading and math.
Dynamic duo.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Nice work.
The wonderful job. I just learned something myself.
To divide?
Yes. How was that easy?
When they call it, that's the new math. You'll hear parents saying, I'm in the new math. We're gonna shift gears and I'm gonna ask Dr. Remka and team to come forward, and if Tim wouldn't mind firing up the student video first. Dr. Remka, you wanna start with the student video?
No, we wanna start the presentation.
Sorry, do the presentation first, Tim, if that's okay?
Then it will make sense.
Sorry about that.
So at the mid-year, we gave the STAR reading and writing assessment as well as a growth measure. So unlike Millville, we do it a little bit differently. We wanted to do growth measure, and growth measure, you wanna explain what that is?
Yeah, so the growth measure aligns to the HMH curriculum, so like Millville said, we were able to see what they actually learned and have questions about, that were straight from the curriculum along with the same topics, so it wasn't like surprises in it. So the kids have seen those same question types, and then we were able to see how they were doing from the beginning to the middle and then now to the end.
And the teacher look at the data. So say, for example, the mid-year, so they'll look at, okay, from beginning of the year to mid-year, we taught these skills, and where, you know, where, some of the skills that we identified as skills, students still struggling. So are we using RTI block to reinforce that? Or do we need to reteach for the whole class? It really depend on the data. So the growth measure gives us like a clearer measure based on the instruction. So we look at our STAR, the BOY is the first, first row and then BOY. For fourth grade, even though our exceeding went down to students, the parenthesis in is number of students, because, you know, they actually went to the math category. But what I like... met category. But what I like to highlight is the red one, which is below, not meeting. We actually cut it in half from twenty-one students to eleven. Percentage is very deceiving sometimes, so we wanted to give you the exact number. And fifth grade, we had, also went down for exceeding, but if you look at the not meeting and partial met, we, not meeting, we actually went down. We are not saying everything is glorious. Our fifth grade, we have some work to do. So I wanna be clear about that. And in terms of our math, there are five category. The first one is above and the red, I mean, green is on level and then yellow is approaching. And that, what they call that color? Salmon? No. Mustard color?
Orange.
Is, yeah. Um, is, uh, below, and then the red is far below. Although a far below maintained the same number, but our below is actually went from twenty-six kids to seven. So our meeting and exceeding, exceeding is, I mean, above level is actually went from fourteen kids to forty-two. Same thing with fifth grade, nineteen to fifty-one for exceed, uh, for above level. And the way, you know, far below, it went from ten to six kids. I don't wanna read all the numbers to you, 'cause you can see it. For sixth grade, very similar to four and five, six and seventh grade of with the STAR for not meeting, we went down from nineteen kids to twelve. And most of the kids actually went to partial met and to meeting. And seventh grade, we have not meeting, went down to one kid. Not me, uh, partial met went up. So that, that data actually tells us that we get some work to do with seventh grade. We did have a shift in teaching, you know, teacher, that we shift like, uh, in November. So we have some work to do with our seventh grade teachers. In terms of math growth measure, they did really well. We went from above level from twelve students to twenty-two for sixth grade and seventh grade from five to nine. We did cut from not, far below from eight to twelve, uh, went up to eight to twelve, but with, I keep forgetting the category, below from twenty-one to fourteen. And same thing with seventh grade, as you can see the numbers.
Um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about writing. I should've introduced myself. I'm Megan Murray. I teach fourth grade special ed. Um, so, um, fourth grade's the first one. So we focused in, in the middle of year in our writing on the response to reading. It's more of that expository writing because we noticed when we looked at MCAS responses in past years and then looking at the beginning of the year, um, response to reading, the kids really want to tell a story and like write with their voice and like the narrative aspect. So we really focused this year on like constructing a well-written paragraph and then in turn, turning into an essay. Because something else we noticed was that on MCAS, when they're given just like the short responses, they're just writing and writing and writing and keep going, which in the end can hurt them. Um, so we really focused on that. So you can see, I won't again read all the numbers, but the beginning of the year is below the middle of the year, so don't get confused by that. I was, um, we went from seventy-five percent in developing to thirty-four percent in developing. Um, and then progressing, again, we went from twenty-one at the beginning, which those kids from red moved up and now it's forty-three. And then exceeding, we went from only one student out of a hundred and eighteen to ten that are now strong. Um, then we go to grade five and similarly, we noticed kinda same trends in fourth and fifth grade with the response to reading. That's kind of the focus, but they also did more of the narrative essay writing at the middle of the year. So you can see those numbers. Again, the beginning of the year went from forty-nine to thirty-three and fifty to twenty-four. And then the exceeding, or the strong, I should say, on the writing rubric, stayed the same, or went up a little bit from eight percent to fourteen percent and five percent to fourteen percent. Keep going. Sixth grade writing, so at the beginning of the year, they focused just like fourth and fifth on the response to reading, which is again constructing those expository paragraphs. Then they broke it down by teacher as well in classes, so you can see that. Um, their developing at the beginning of the year was forty-one of the students and now it's down to seven. So that's a big jump. Um, and then seventh grade writing, they also, out of a hundred and twenty-one student, went from twenty-nine in developing to thirty-five in developing now. So there is work to do in seventh grade on writing, but you can see they increased in the strong from five to twenty-one.
So basically, grades seven, both reading and writing, we have some work to do.
Sure. Like I said, I'm the special ed teacher, so I can talk a lot about fourth grade special ed. So I heard them talking earlier, we, these numbers are kind of hard to compare from BOY to ELY because we have students coming in and exiting throughout the year, so the numbers do change. Um, but I did post the SGP, which was sixty for our end of the year, which is awesome. Um, we still, and at least in fourth grade, there's no kids exceeding on STAR reading, but we went from fourteen in the not meeting category to twenty, to just six. So that's huge growth. And then in growth measure, at the beginning of the year, there was ten at the far below and now we're down to eight. Um, but importantly, we went from eight kids in the below to just two at the middle. So you can kinda see those numbers shifting up and increasing. Um, fifth grade, we sort of talked about this before. Again, the numbers are changing throughout, so you'll see they don't match. But they went from the beginning of the year, eight kids were not meeting on the STAR, the expectations, and it's down to seven. And then it's increasing.
The two students that, um, meeting category went down. And we, so we wanted like understand why, so we identified the two students. And both students went through some, you know, social emotional crisis. However, that's not an excuse for us because we, as educators, should remove those obstacle, obstacles so they can assess and they can perform. So we are, we have a plan for both of them and we wanna make sure like that, you know, kinda remove that obstacle and support them in a way that they need to perform. But math, I, um, they did pretty well. They went down from not, um, below, far below and went up to, um, even though the above grade level maintained the same, but the meeting category went up and also pa, uh, approaching also went up.
So again, this is grade six STAR now for the reading. They went from eleven kids not meeting, almost cut it in half down to six. Um, and then you can see that they had an increase in both meeting and exceeding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for their growth measure as well, they had cut down the far below grade level from ten to six and then increasing through and maintaining those kids that are exceeding, which is a good thing as well, because the expectations get higher.
And Jenny, I know you mentioned, I just wanted to mention that although we see kids and say they're in that orange and red, you have plans for them, but you also still have plans and expectations for the kiddos who are in the, the blue, the green or the yellow. So it's not just focusing on group, it's all kids.
So during our TI block, we actually designate a teacher to work with students that are actually in that meeting and exceeding category. Because in the past, we noticed kids in that category, we weren't worried about them because they are meeting or exceeding, but they need that challenge, they need that push. So we have a teacher designate for that group.
Can I say something, Josie? I appreciate you identifying that you're identifying the numbers going down and you're knowing what students you need to work with. I appreciate you informing us. Thank you.
Um, and then seventh grade as well, the numbers are being cut in the red category and then increasing through. Both reading and math.
I think something to celebrate is our L students. If you look at the left side, there's those numbers for, for, you know, it gives you the average, it was one point nine on the left side, bottom, um, column. And if you look at the right side, which is the mid-year, we just got that, um, data, we went from one point nine to two point eight. And that is huge. I always ask teachers, you know, how did you get that number, right? Observations, observation. I see them a few times and learning well, yes, I see them. But what are they really doing in the classroom? So I ask a lot of questions. She, she actually said to me, I challenge my advanced kids. I challenge the kids who are actually level one and I challenge them to the next level. She identified every kid on that WIDA descriptor. And she's looking at the next level. She wasn't looking at that level. This is what they can do and this is where I'm staying at. She's look at what I can do to challenge them. So this is the score we can.
Jenny mentioned the WIDA descriptors, so all of our staff, we have kiddos who take the WIDA, which is a little bit different than the academic test. What it is, is language development in those areas, reading, writing, oral language and listening. And the score she showed, I don't know if you can go back, but it may only look like one point up, but it's really a whole chunk that goes up. So which, that's pretty sig, that's very significant growth for these kiddos. And if you remember, when we got our accountability back, we exceeded expectations with our kiddos. And this is a combination. We have a phenomenal ESL teacher in the building, but it's also, you know, the work that the teachers are doing too, a combination.
I don't want to read through the strength and opportunities. But we do notice our kiddo, kiddos, what we focus on this year is responding to the reading. From the MCAS, we notice our kids can write, they can compose an essay, but they not, they weren't able to identify evidence. Fourth grade, four to seven, they're very good at copying, copy and paste, but they're not able to paraphrase, understanding the past passage, identified evidence to answer questions. So we really focus on that and we see tremendous growth. Um, our math, we see even more growth. One thing we noticed, and actually Jason pointed out, in the past many years, we always have concern with fractions. Um, students struggle with fractions. So this year, I, I, we see a lot of growth. And, you know, when Jason asked that question, I say, geez, what are we doing differently? And I went back and interviewed teachers. I think it's a lot of them mentioned about increasing opportunities for practicing reinforcement, but most importantly, help them connect those fractions to real-life applications. Because learning fractions are a common denominator, you know, we need, and, and multiplication of fractions, what does that mean? So they use a lot of visual models showing that. That is really helping the kids to connect those fraction. And we did a lot of number sense.
And ST math has been helpful. I know Millville also mentioned that, but we're, I kind of championing right now the ST math program here. So we're focusing on assigning the objectives as we are teaching them with HMH, so they can see the connection. And we've started to do more puzzle talks across the classrooms where we're showing them before we do the module opener, so they can connect ST math to what we're learning. Cause I feel like that was the big disconnect between the programs, so now they're able to see how they align.
So same with seventh grade. So this is what we're very excited to share with you. Uh, IOT kind of, we did, so mid-year, we have to submit a dissertation to Jason of our mid-year reflection. So I, as an IOT, we work together, we look at the data, we reflect on our practice. And also we reflect on our school commitment plan. So we actually wrote a reflection together and then we send it to our whole staff and look at it and give us feedback. So it's like a collaborative reflection, cause that's important. We want buying, right? So based on that, we thought, okay, we're doing a lot of right things, but what's next? We don't want anything new for teachers, because we just don't wanna add another thing to teachers. So there's two things. There are two books that I actually came across. One is Building Thinking Classrooms, BTC, and the Writing Rope. So it's not entirely new initiatives. Actually, we wanna mix, we wanna recognize them as enhance, enhancement to what we already doing. Uh, those are the tools that we find and strengthen our instructional practices. So the Building Thinking Classroom is really increasing student engagement and problem solving. So last Friday during our PD day, we actually gave the first module training to our teachers. We put them to the test. We gave them tasks and I purposely picked these two pictures. The first one, you see a social, seventh grade social study teacher, science teacher and a sub-separate teacher. The bottom picture, we have a physical education teacher, a math teacher and a music teacher. So what we call is the medical, uh, medical, vertical math, but we don't want to call vertical math. We wanna call vertical learning, because that whole thinking classroom can apply to any subject. And then the Writing Rope is, we've been doing a lot of focusing on writing, but we really wanna push for a writing across content. Um, there's some part of the writing piece should be responsible by all content teachers, not just ELA. So those are the two things that we wanna focus on. We have a plan before the summer, before the teachers leave for the summer, we wanna make sure that they have time to go through the module, modules and time to plan. We wanna give them time in the summer to kinda think about the learning. Um, I don't wanna come back in September and say, we're gonna do this, let's train the teachers. No, 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 because the kids gonna come in. We need to make sure we deliver that, right? So our, some of our teacher is really, you know, excited, so they already kinda start the thinking classroom. But I leave that with our, is, uh, leadership team. The building class, building thinking classroom is really a approach to po, to solve, a problem to solve, but it's not a dance for you to master. What that mean is every teacher should make it work for themselves, because what, si, sitting in front of them are different kids. They need to make it work for that classroom. So our kids are excited. They can't be here because of falls, uh, spring sports, but they are fighting to be on the video, so I could only think, four, I'm sorry, Matt, your son didn't get back. So we wanna kinda play that video. What does that mean, right? We heard from us, but we wanna you to hear from the kids.
I like thinking classrooms a lot because I feel like lots of the people are doing, doing different work. And at, at first, I'm analyzing and doing lots of the works.
I think it's great for everyone totally.
And how has that helped your math skills?
It's helped my math skills a lot because I feel like when you teach us normally, like in the tub, it's like not really making us like have errors and fix them, but when there's, I'm thinking classroom, you can fix the errors.
Awesome. So overall, how do you feel about thinking classroom?
I love it. I hope the other classrooms are good.
What I think about thinking classroom, I'd say it kinda helps me a lot, to be honest. I'm usually quiet in class sometimes because I don't know the answer, but since I've been working with people, I have improved with talking. With the marker, um, when I can't speak, I make faces sometimes. When I don't understand what they're talking about, maybe I say, I'm just making, it's kind of like. I've actually connected with my friends and, well, a lot more and I love to know them a lot better as well.
And how do you think thinking classrooms is affecting your abilities in math?
To be honest with you, I value what we have done today in the test. I thought I was, I was gonna be doing good on the test, but I actually did feel good on the test, I did better than I thought. It actually improved my memory.
Awesome. Anything else before?
Just to say, thinking classroom is a really good technique for kids to learn more.
So.
Thank you.
I think, um, thinking classrooms are good because it helps us not just listen to other kids and what they're saying and we can actually figure out, um, what we're supposed to do.
And has thinking classrooms improved your math abilities at all?
Uh, yeah, they have a lot.
A lot. Do you feel more confident?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Anything else you wanna share about thinking classrooms?
I feel like we should've done this really early.
Agreed, me too. All right, thank you. So now that we've started building thinking classrooms in math, how do you feel about it?
I think it will help a lot of kids because I don't talk when we do math books. And now that we're in like a group, I talk and I draw up the problems and it's helping. And now that we're in like a group, I talk and I draw up the problems and it's helping.
And do you think that it's helping your math skills?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you feel more confident?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Do you get an opportunity to talk every time you work in a group?
Yeah.
Did you usually do that before?
No.
No. Anything else you want to say about it?
Um, no.
So two thumbs up or what?
Two thumbs up.
All right.
Um, thinking classroom helps me learn. I got more progress in my learning. I got more questions right the first time. And it helped me learn more. I was able to work with people. So if I got something wrong, they would help me. And they would learn and grow. And also, um, all my friends have improved. And they have also done really well with their learning.
Um, I, I think is, we don't want the kids to hide. So when they're at their desk, they can hide. There's only so much the teacher can see, right? So we don't want them to hide. We want them to really work on that vertical learning so the teacher can see. And we also don't want the kids to mimic. Because if they mimic, they're not going to remember what they learned. We want them to apply their skills. What, one of the girls said that I make faces because when I'm holding a marker, people are telling me what to write. That mean, they're not supposed to talk. So the person who hold the marker only can write. But what that person can do when the ma- marker is passed to the next person, that person can say, well, I'd like to revisit the last problem. So we're encouraging kids to go back. Um, they feel more confidence. They're not afraid to make mistakes because they can re-raise it. Just re-raise it. So um, what um, the teacher actually recorded it, told me she just gave a math test yesterday. Every single kid passed. She had never had, like, every kid passed the test. So this is not magic. It's a journey that is going to take a long time. But we're excited. Any questions?
That last student really had one more point to make.
I know, we cut him off.
While we're at suspense here, I want to know, and he has one more thing to say.
Any question? Jason saw a couple of lessons today.
It was great. Yeah, yeah, it was great.
Yeah, we're al- we're always asking kids to explain their thinking. And they just stare, and then they put their heads down. But this is making them explain to someone else, not just the teacher. So they have to do it.
I do have one question. The thinking classroom, i- it's not a graded thing. It's just a tool you're using, correct?
Yeah. So actually, I'm glad you asked that. So we're not, it's not a curriculum.
Yep.
We actually use our curriculum. But the teachers have to actually take the unit and look at it and cut them apart. So one kid said, I'm so glad we're not using the textbook. The teacher say, that is from the textbook. He had no clue. And the teachers can make decisions. Say, some of these problem, mm, not challenging enough. So they have, what they call it, a spicy questions, mild. And what is it, Jason, you remember? It was mild.
Medium and mild, uh, and, and, yeah, mild.
So all the kids want to do the spicy questions. But are they ready? So they say that today, you know, I asked them, are you ready for the spicy questions? No. So they stay on the medium or the mild. Um, they, I, I, we are seeing the engagement, like.
I know you saw it here on the video, but I know when they presented live to us. And we always like hearing from our teachers, but it's awesome to hear from the kids when we do it live when they come here. But um, they could really explain. It wasn't just, I use a strategy of, like, they got into it. They explained what they do. They got up, like, they were showing what they're, you know, up, you know, in the air. We break the markers and we have to be quiet. Like, they're able to do that. You can see they're enjoying it.
So the video actually suggested by one of the students. You know, when I say, can you come? No, I can't, I have sports. So you say, but you can record us. I'm like, oh, that's a great idea. So.
One of the things, I noticed Jenny when we were visiting uh classrooms, I think it was fourth grade we were in. It, we went to a few, but the fourth-grade math class really stuck out. The kids were using these kind of these white chart, uh laminate paper, uh poster paper things, and they were doing the math right on it. And their backs were all to the center of the room because there were like three or four of them working on this. You know, each, there was probably, I don't know, five or six of these hanging around the room, like chart paper. And um, it was really interesting to see. Usually, they, like, the kids will engage with us when we come in the room. They kind of talk to us. And I said to a group of three students, there were three young ladies that were working in the front of the room. I'm like, oh, hey, I'm just letting you know I'm behind you. I don't want to, you know, startle you. And they all, they just turned around and gave me the snarkiest look, like, you're distracting us. They were trying to work through this problem. It was pretty complex. And they're like, yeah, no, you're fine, you're fine. And they were going back to what they were doing. I mention that only because they didn't want the distraction. Like, they were really engaged in.
And I was trying to help one group, and I get stopped. And he's like, you're not supposed to help us.
You didn't have the marker or whatever the means, yeah.
And I asked one question, he goes, that's not an open-ended question. Okay. And I think we went into one classroom, they had already done that.
Yeah.
And then they are looking at different questions, and they put them in category. Mild, uh, medium, and spicy. And I say, oh, I, at first, I'm like, why is, why is she doing that, like the teacher? Now, you know, when we saw the kids in action, I understood because they actually have to solve the problem and figure out, is that a spicy question?
Yeah, and then defend it. Like, why was this question harder than the other? It was really like some analytical thinking that kids had to explain to each other why they put the questions in each category. Hence why it looked like a job interview that. We were talking about, the kids are really in partnerships doing it. It was really, it was really interesting to watch.
Yeah.
To watch the thinking, like, out loud and listen to them talk about why they were categorizing questions as harder than other questions. They could really articulate it.
Yeah.
It was pretty cool.
Yeah. You're welcome to come and visit. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, are you on with us? Carrie, God that joined us. We were having some tech issues. We were trying to get her on earlier.
Yes, I'm here now.
And so I'll let the record reflect, Ted joined us as well. And Carrie is actually about with technical difficulties is now with us. Okay, back to consent agenda A. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
A motion made by Aaron.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. We'll save the terrorists for later. Any further questions, uh discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next up, public forum. Anyone like to come and speak in front of the school committee? Please come right up to the table.
Two issues. Um, my, my, my name's Teresa Carpenter. My daughter attends middle school here, and my son's in the elementary school. My first issue is, I was hoping the school committee could help um forward along getting a playground built here at the middle school. When we were moving our young children, forced to move our young children into the middle school, that was a sticking point for a lot of parents. And um, we were, Mrs. Remka had talked about how she built one-in-one socket and that it could be built over summer. And a lot of parents even volunteered to help build. And so far, nothing's been constructed. I've reached out a couple of times, and I'm just hoping maybe the school committee can help forward that along.
Well, if you don't mind if I interrupt you, we have, it's a warrant article in front of both towns for the town meeting for a playground out here.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So then that can happen sooner than, rather than later?
Uh, so again, it has to get approved by the town, Blackstone and Millville.
Okay.
And, and, and then it will, I, I can't, I don't see that not being approved. I don't want to jinx it, but I think. And then as soon as that's complete, uh, the, the, we couldn't start anything before July first uh because it's the funding, that's when the funding becomes available.
That's when the funding.
We will put it on the top of the radar.
So that's what we'll be looking for, the parents after July first.
Absolutely.
Volunteers will be very helpful.
Yes.
Yep, we will be there. Um, my second issue is um, the t- large turnover of teachers in the elementary school. Like, uh, we've lost a lot of really good teachers there. Just wondering what's being done to um foster a better environment in the elementary school for our teachers so that we don't lose good teachers? I'm going to list several, uh, pairs, teachers, specialists in just the last couple of years. And it's concerning. They're very, very good teachers we've lost. And I'm just wondering what's being done in that school to foster a better environment, I guess? Can anyone speak to that?
Well, my response to that would be those concerns, if you would address directly through an email to the superintendent.
Okay, yeah, I met with him um, about a year and a half ago regarding the turnover in just the specialist area. But I did touch on teacher turnover. It wasn't really met with um, it was met with more like a blank stare and um, well, our students are our main concern, which I agree. Our students are our main concern. But happy teachers equal happy students. And the large turnover is still very concerning. And he promised to do something and, you know, asked me to give him some time. And it's been, you know, a year and a half or two years almost. And it's not getting any better. If anything, it's getting worse. So I'm just wondering if there's been any improvement, I guess, on your end, Mr. DeFalco, for that.
Can't have this conversation in public forum.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not how public forum is set up. I'd be happy to meet with you again. I, and, and have a follow-up conversation if you'd like.
Okay, so when I met with you before, nothing happened. So that's why I'm just.
That's your opinion.
Was that a year and a half, was it a year and a half ago?
About a year and a half ago, so.
I'd encourage communication directly. As a school committee, two things. The engagement on the playground was a real easy one because we've, that we've done that publicly. This year, where, where it gets into personnel and things like that, that's something that the administration would deal directly. If there was an issue, then report back to the school committee.
Okay, so if I meet with them again and still nothing happens, do I come back to you?
Uh, you're, uh, the, these are public meetings. You are always welcome to come back to us. But I would just recommend that, that process to follow up on that.
Absolutely, then.
And I'm sure some of us will ask the same questions after.
Okay, yeah, I will follow up then and come back to more meetings if nothing happens. But I appreciate you hearing me out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, anyone else for our public forum? All right, moving on to school committee. Uh, vote to approve the Frederick, Frederick Hartnett Middle School New York field trip.
Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, um, I don't know if Jenny wants to speak at all to that, since she's here. The New York trip?
I think she forgot about it.
That's pretty good, since you were still here, Dr. Remka. Do you want to give a quick overview?
So we've been thinking a lot about our seventh grade. Because the whole thing, when we were merging two schools, parents would worry about the sixth and seventh losing that middle school experience. And we don't want that. And we, we don't want the elementary kids losing that elementary either. So we've been talking a lot about, and because eighth grade is no longer here, so they are actually going to Washington, you know, at the high school. We want to do something for our seventh grade. So we decided to take them to New York. They're not going to want to hear it, I'm going to, so. They're actually excited. Um, so we're taking students to New York. Um, we're going to visit the museum, and then we're going to spend some time in Central Park. Um, we have a lot of volunteer. We actually turned down, a lot, a lot of staff want to go with them. So the, I believe the fee is, uh, the trip is ninety-five dollars. Include all transportation and also the ticket to go into a museum. And we figured want, just to get a few more dollars so we can add your buy snack for the kids on, on the bus. So we'll be leaving here around six o'clock AM. We'll be back around ten. Don't worry, it won't come.
Is that a Friday?
No, we tried to do Friday. But I, we could not get transportation. So it'll be a weekday.
And no visit to Yankee Stadium though, right?
Huh?
No visit to Yankee Stadium?
I know. I try.
She's not driving the bus, right?
So they're very excited. Um, we are, and since we are the school committee, if anyone listening would like to sponsor a child, please let me know. Uh, we have about, so far, about ten to twelve students asking for sponsorship.
That was going to be my next question for you. I have a student that can afford it.
You said ninety-five dollars?
Yeah.
I will sponsor.
Thank you.
I sponsor a child.
Boy, that Jenny can, huh? So.
Give you all our money.
Jesus, giving me that look. Yes.
How many students are in the seventh grade?
A hundred and twenty-eight. Um, we would like all of them to go. And I think if we get a hundred, we'll be happy. And we did make sure that they know money is not an issue. If you have any, you need any help, just let us know.
So I'll make a motion to approve the New York City trip for our seventh grade on June ninth.
Second.
Presented.
What's that, you? A motion made by Aaron, seconded uh by Tara Locken. Uh, any further discussion?
I'll just say, I do know you probably shouldn't stay after dark at the um Museum of Natural History in New York. I watched a movie about that one time. It's not a good thing.
Do they have enough um chaperones? Maybe that's why you're stuck on the, the chaperone thing, is that movie.
No. Chaperones are good. Even, even an officer in there, I see. That's great.
All right, any, any other discussion?
You have the children. That's all, all that matters.
I agree. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Oh, and Carrie.
Nope, thank you.
Jenny, you're contacting me and Aaron.
Yes, yes, I'll say.
You mean Venmo?
I appreciate it, thank you.
I'll bring you cash.
Thanks, Dr. Remka.
Uh, next is a, uh, to approve a BMR senior trip to Martha's Vineyard.
Yes, this is their annual senior trip. Um, and I know it's um not out of state, but it is over the water. And we thought it'd be important for the school committee to be well aware. We always bring the senior trips in front of the school committee anyhow. So we're looking for approval for our seniors this year to go to, back to the Martha's Vineyard. It's been a couple of years since we've been.
It has been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve Martha's Senior, Senior Trip.
Motion ba- made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Ted. Um, I'm going to have to follow up if there's going to be appropriate number of life jackets and boats.
They'll be taking the ferry, they should be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. I got the evil eye from Mr. Catalano on that one. Vote to approve revised 25-26 school calendar.
Yes, there was one error on the last calendar. Accidentally, the Friday before Labor Day was counted as an instructional day. It should not have been. So the actual last day, like this year, the last day of school will end on a Monday. But that actually works in our advantage because we typically have a snow day or two, and we're already into the next week anyhow. So instead of having a snow day and then ending on the Monday, if we had a snow day next year, we'd end on the Tuesday, et cetera. So just an error on the accounting side of, on the accounting side of things on that August 29th date. But it is now correct.
And I'll take a motion to approve the revised 25-26 school calendar.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. MSBA update, Tara.
I don't really think we have much. But Jason, is there anything that you...
Yeah, not much. In the past couple of weeks, we finished the ed visioning work, and we're going to go over those final reports next Wednesday at our school building committee. And I think that's really it for now, right?
Because we haven't had an actual meeting since, other than the workshops.
And we do have an enrollment conversation with MSBA at the beginning of next week. Because our enrollment continues to increase as a school district. So looking at, you know, what wiggle room do we have with MSBA to look at those student enrollment numbers again, to, you know, to account for the increase in enrollment that we're seeing with students both staying in the district and families moving to our district, which is a great sign of the good work that everybody's doing.
Very good. MS, sorry, MES Water Update. So I got the most recent update at 4:14 this afternoon. I have been working with, or keeping communication with Peter and the town administrator and Jen Gill, the chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen in Millville. And as we probably, many of us may know, they've already guaranteed, provide bottled water throughout the school, the next school year. They have funded their water operation. There was some discrepancy going into last year's town meeting. But the most recent update is from this afternoon, and I'll just share it. We sent the grant earlier this year, and we were asked to make a few changes to it. This shows us that the team did in fact look at the application. We made our adjustments and resubmitted and received an email on March 11th, 2025, which stated in part, and this is from the Mass DEP, "The Mass DEP DWP has forwarded the information you have submitted to the EPA to confirm the project's grant funding. They are currently in review by the EPA. Once your project is confirmed, the Mass DEP DWP will formally notify you of the grant award. The contract documents will be sent to you for your completion." "Peter and I have reached out to Mary Jude Pigsley, the director of Mass DEP Central Region, to see if there is any update. We have also asked Mary Jude if there is any changes to the current grant and the administration will impact the grant. She confirmed that the $1 million has already been allocated by the EPA for the Millville Water Project. Best regards, Jennifer Gill." So that's the latest update. I have hesitated to ask them to come in and present anything because that's all there is, until they've actually received the grant. So that's the only update I have on that.
Are they still hoping, expecting us to be back in September? Or is that something we're going to revisit?
I think that's something we'll probably revisit. I was hoping and working with them to see, I would bring it back for consideration. So they've assured us, they've assured me and to superintendent that there would be no exposure. They would provide all the water to limit, that there would be no exposure to the students. I, my personal end of it, is once the approval of the grant comes through and there's a construction schedule with that, then I'd feel much more confident.
Revisiting our...
My opinion, my opinion on that. And that's potentially could, and so we, we can do that essentially up in, you'd want to give this district time to, we have it budgeted for the move back.
Yep, if we do.
But we would want to do that.
Yep.
A deadline, but we'd want to, we can go right up to, through the summer. But you would want to make that decision, of course, in a timely manner. So we're hoping that they, they're expecting that information any day now.
The approval?
Yes. I appreciate that Mary Jude is, the money is allocated, and it's just a matter of the paperwork. But it'd be great if they got that paperwork signed off.
Yeah, they need the approval.
Yeah. That's where I stand individually. I don't know about the rest of the committee, so. But I would prefer to have a more robust discussion with them here. So. Good enough update for now? All right.
Do you have any of the most recent water testing?
I can, I will tread...
The last one I saw did not pass.
I will tread lightly on that because...
It's public.
They've shared frustrations, Jen and Peter have shared frustrations that essentially the current water operator is part of the proposed project with the EPA funding. So they're not, they're not treating the water with as much, the current water with as much detail as they should be, in their opinion. And I hate to speak for them any further on that. But that's the sentiment they expressed with me. Essentially, the water operator says...
The last two quarters were not passing. I don't want to be inaccurate.
Yeah, and they were right out front with that, like it's...
It's supposed, it's a public document. I just couldn't remember if it was...
It is.
And I think the, I think the idea is that the operator is really focused on the new filter system and is putting a lot of effort and energy into the design of that versus the maintenance, I think.
Yeah, there's no sense of continuing to treat this water, essentially that no one in the building's really using it or drinking it now. And so focusing on the, the part of the, the big part of the application process is that operator and...
The new piece that Mary Jude said would have to be approved, right?
So the whole DEP application thing is a whole project in itself, so. And if I spoke out of school on any of this, I'm sure that I will be corrected in the very near future. But I think I summed it up pretty good.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll continue with the report of the superintendent. And to item B, revised district improvement strategy.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mary Colonino to join us up front. And just as Mary's making her way down, just as a reminder to our community and friends that are tuning in from home and of course, our school committee, we look at our school district improvement strategy a bit different here. A lot of school systems will develop a five or six-year plan. And we actually, as you know, we don't develop a plan of that duration. It's very long. Instead, we, we have tightened up that timeline for us and BMR to keep it to three years. And believe it or not, we are at the end of the last year of our current third-year blueprint or strategic plan. I mention that only as a reminder because one of the benefits of having a shorter, tighter plan, and you see these goals and objectives show up in the school improvement plans because all of our school improvement plans are tethered back to our district improvement strategy. So actually, we heard about that tonight from our two schools that presented. And we'll hear from the high school at our April 10th meeting. They're going to present their data at April 10th. They didn't join us tonight, A, just to kind of spread it out a little bit, but B, Mr. BMR was tonight, and I didn't want to pull anybody away from that. And we know it's a really important community feel-good event for our, for our staff and students over there, so. But Mary's going to talk a little bit about, really just kind of some quarter turns or adjustments to the improvement strategy moving forward. And I want to be really clear, this is a draft. Once the school committee reviews it tonight, we're actually going to take it out into the community. And recently, we went to, I think it was a, it was called a Business of Main Street in Blackstone? Kind of an event? And had a bunch of the local business owners and various organizations within town got together. And we're actually going to take our strategy, once the school committee reviews it tonight, and bring it out into the community and get feedback from our community partners, from our governance boards, and also the town side. And then bring it back to the school committee. We hope sometime in May, I think, Mary, for one final vote. But wanted to bring it forward as more of an introduction. But you'll see that it's really just a quarter turn of our current strategy because we just continue to go deeper into the good work that's happening across all our schools. So Tim, I don't know if you want to put up the graphic of our improvement strategy? And to our school committee, you have it in your packet. Yes, sir?
Yep.
Thanks, Tim.
So we began this in November with our instructional leadership team for the district. And we reviewed the current blueprint that we have now and considered whether any goals, goal changes were necessary. And it pretty was, it was pretty much unanimous that we keep the same goals that we have. So the curriculum, instruction, whole child and community, those are still the same goals. But like Jason said, we've decided to explore those. We decided to explore those in a greater depth. So we did that for our first few meetings. And then the principals and the coaches brought what we had done to their ILT meetings in their schools. And so they gave us feedback as well. And then they also went to the parent school councils. So we've gotten feedback from, from teachers, from parents, and from the district ILT. And so right now, our final draft and implementation, this is like what Jason had said, our three-year blueprint. And it is aligned with our portrait of graduate and embedded in the school improvement plan. And then we will be presenting this. And in the, in the, in the summer, in August, we'll get together with our district leadership retreat, and then we'll start working on the action steps.
So Mary, behind each one of these four areas will be a set of action steps that we'll put in place for our next school year.
Yes.
And you see those action steps come through in the school improvement plans?
Right. Any questions?
Forward to August.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you'll notice that when you look at the, our current strategy, you'll see the goals have just shifted a bit. The same topics are there. And frankly, we've had this conversation, I know, here quite a bit. We've had it with our leadership team. We've had it with our school-based instructional leadership teams. And we've had it with our students as well. We have student instructional leadership teams in all of our schools, as you know. We heard from some tonight. You know, and the mantra that we kind of hear across all the groups is the same, like, if we're not working on these things, then what are we doing? And you know that in my goals, we have other issues that we focus on, you know, like, you know, capacity building of our staff and supporting staff retention and really focusing in on, you know, adding whatever additional supports we need to put in place for students and for the adults. Those show up in here through various, through the various goals and focus areas. But this is definitely, at least after working with the, kind of the core of the parents and the leaders and across our district that are responsible for this work, they all landed in the same place, which was really just quarter turning some of the language. So we'll be back once we take this out to the community to have some discussions and see if this feels right to them as well.
All righty. Well, this is yours.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. I'm going to ask our athletic director to join us and do an overview this evening of all things athletics. We're going to take a reflection back on all the great work that happened in the winter and share some of our highlights from our winter season and then talk a little bit about where we are as we just teed off, I think, spring. So thanks, darling, for being here.
So overall, we had a successful winter season. We had 106 students registered for winter sports. We offered basketball at all three levels for both boys and girls with middle school, JV, and varsity. We had an indoor track team, which we're still building roster size for. We had cheer teams, a swim co-op, and an ice hockey co-op. We had five students named DVC All-Stars, which means they were top performing athletes in our league. Those athletes were Jackson Dutton, named first team for boys' basketball. Carson Canoyer, named second team for boys' basketball. Natalia Marius, named second team for girls' basketball. Maren Berry, named first team for girls' basketball. And Camille Wetherell, named second team for indoor track in the high jump.
I just want to point out how much of a big deal that is.
Yes.
We've gone years without, so great job for all those, all those athletes.
And to their parents.
And... Very proud.
Our winter athletes of the week were Adriana Gerard, Lila Haynes, Seth Cades, Natalia Marius, and Camille Wetherell. All these athletes were nominated by their coaches. And then when we get multiple, I decide out of those options which ones receive the nomination. These are just a few pictures of our winter teams. As I mentioned, we had a successful winter season. Both basketball teams were very successful. Girls' basketball and boys' basketball competed in the clerk tournament, which requires a certain record in order to make certain power ranking. And then they also made it into the playoffs. We had one Division V indoor qualifier for indoor track. We had three qualifiers for swim sectionals in the Grafton co-op. One thing that we're still waiting for, for winter season, is survey responses from both parents and students. This is really important, both for continuing improvement of the athletics program, but also coaches really want that feedback to know how they can improve the team experience. So I'll send that link out again to all the registered athletes from winter. There's a separate survey for parents and a separate survey for students, and it's completely anonymous. Now on to our spring season. So as of now, we have 191 students registered for spring sports. Out of those, 33 are registered for baseball, 30 for softball, 10 for girls' tennis. We have one in the lacrosse co-op. And 117 students for track with the middle school and high school combined. And in that track number, it's about a 50-50 split. There's 10 are boys, then girls in the track team, so. In addition to that, we have open strength and conditioning sessions still continuing throughout the spring season. That's offered by a few of our football coaches. That's offered Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 2:00 to 4:30. It's open to all athletes. It is not set just for football. And if any coach has any recommendations on what strength workouts to do for their athletes, they can send it to the football coach, and he can work with them on that specific routine. Our spring sports offered are baseball, both JV and varsity; softball, JV and varsity; middle school outdoor track; high school outdoor track. We just have girls' tennis. We haven't had any boys sign up for tennis. If any boys end up signing up in the next week, usually they join the girls' team and do exhibition matches when another team has a boy on their team. And then we also have a co-op lacrosse team with Nipmuck. So for track, eighth graders have the option, like we did in the fall, eighth graders have the option of being on the middle school team or the high school team. Just the main point is that they can't flip-flop between the two. So if they compete with middle schoolers, they have to follow through with that for the remainder of the season. Our first games start next week with baseball and softball scrimmages. And then after that, track will be starting their first meet with like an intersquad meet. Here are our spring coaches. Our head varsity track coach is Patrick Rosendale. Our head middle school track coach is Marsha Harvey. And we have assistant coaches Jessica Leonard and Becky Boulay that work with both schools. Our head tennis coach is Molly Breen. Our varsity softball coaches, they're both new, are Russell Wise and Larry Givens. Our JV softball coaches are Jarrett Nyland and Katie McKinley. Our varsity baseball coach is Chris Manguso. And we have a new JV baseball coach, Chris Huss. We had our first meet the coaches night this past Monday. It seemed to be a decent turnout. And I'm hoping we can continue that meet the coaches night event through all the seasons. We also had a virtual parent information session a couple of weeks ago. Here are our practice locations for our spring sports. So JV, baseball, and softball will practice at Roosevelt Park. Varsity baseball and softball will practice at the lower fields at the high school. Outdoor track will practice at the high school track. And tennis will practice at the tennis courts at the high school. We also have a rain day schedule planned for any indoor use. So tennis, softball, and baseball have a schedule in place in case it's raining. That includes the gym at the middle school and the gym at the high school. So this is just a screenshot of our athletics website. I really want to encourage all parents to use this as like a main resource for athletics. Any flyers that I distribute on social media also get posted on here. And then I just have important links, like a link to SportsU. It's not in the screenshot, but it's been updated to that. The BMR Chargers store for any gear that you want to wear for athletics. The registration link, a link to Unipay for sports fees. And then I have links for every specific team for spring. And if you click on those, it will bring you to like their specific schedule. We have Media Day on Monday, and I hope, once we get those photos, we can also post like roster pictures and names on all those sports sites as well. So athletic schedules, I know a lot of parents use Arbiter Live, and that's originally what I had on the athletics website. That isn't as dependable just because it's what athletic directors use to kind of draft the schedule. So unless both athletic directors accept it, it won't show up on Arbiter Live, including if a game gets canceled for a rain, rain day. If both athletic directors don't accept that it's canceled, it will also not show up as canceled. So I'm trying to make it more streamlined for parents. So I'll have the updated schedules on all the team-specific pages on the athletics website and then also on SportsU. If you go to the, either the general athletics page or the sports teams on SportsU and click on calendar, it will have their practices and games listed. I also really want to encourage parents and students to join SportsU. We are trying to start tracking attendance on SportsU as well. In order for that to be accurate, though, we need all the students' names to show up on the SportsU team. So we're going to be sending that, sending that out to everyone registered just to remind them to join SportsU. If you join SportsU as a parent, you can be listed as a parent. So there can be multiple members of the family. If you join SportsU as a parent, you can be listed as a parent, so there can be multiple members of the family joining the same team. And I think that's it. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question on the Arbiter. So if you're gonna use the website for the schedules, is that just for families? It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you're a signer for officials use Arbiter?
Yes. Yeah, and officials will see, so assigners will see it before it's accepted. So it just won't show up on Arbiter Live, but assigners use like the AD access to Arbiter, if that makes sense.
So is that different from what we see on Arbiter?
Yeah.
I got a question. How many of our coaches are BMRSD staff members?
Jarrett Nyland is a staff member. I believe he's a permanent long-term sub. Molly Breen is a teacher at the high school. Becky Boulay works at the middle school. And Patrick Rosendale works at the middle school. So four, four of the coaches.
And how are the kids getting over to Roosevelt? Are we busing them?
Yes. Yeah, so we have an athletic shuttle leaving from the middle school and the high school. Right now, myself and two of the track coaches are supervising the middle school kids until they get on the bus. And then, once the high school buses finish their route, they come back to the high school and drive any eighth or ninth graders. Right now, it's only for baseball, so any eighth or ninth graders that are on JV, they get sent to Roosevelt.
One more quick question. Are, are we close to full complete schedules for each season?
Yes. I know that's
It's been a discussion.
Very stressful for parents. Right now, we have 17 games scheduled for varsity. Still 10 for JV. That usually is decided this week when they make final decisions on teams and what size their rosters are. I just added today two games with Mount St. Charles. I got confirmation from the MIA that any Rhode Island opponent still counts towards the win-loss record and power rankings. So that's who I'm reaching out to now to get the final three games for baseball. Softball schedule is complete. Track schedule is complete. Tennis schedule is complete, but we may switch two games.
I can see it counting toward win-loss, but how are they gonna do that for power rankings if they're not part of the Massachusetts system?
So as long as they're part of Rhode Island Interscholastic League, I don't know how the math works behind it, but they said as long as they're part of the Rhode Island Interscholastic League, it will still impact both. Which is important, because we want every game to be meaningful for playoffs.
I'm just curious how they're gonna do strength of schedule and be able to do, it's a, it's a semi-comprehensive system.
Yes.
So how they're gonna do teams that aren't playing against other teams in Massachusetts, that doesn't seem but the games towards trying to get to your, your ultimate goal of getting to 10, I can see that.
Yeah.
The other part, I don't see how that's gonna work, but if the MIA told you that, then that's good.
So I think this might be facilities, but it might not. I think Carrie had mentioned a concern on the tennis court at our last meeting.
The cracks and
Is it, but you said we are there, so I was just wondering.
It's been looked at, and Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we just talked about this today. The company that we usually have come in to patch the tennis court has refused to do the patch again this year because he feels that it's just not what needs to be done. He's recommending a completely rebuilt tennis court. But at the same time, Scott's looking to see if we have other alternatives, somebody else can come in and take a look at this.
He's putting a foundation issue, right?
Yeah, because the ground is constantly shifting for us.
It's across the planet, by the way, so I'm, I'm sorry. The ground is shifting across the planet. We have gone through this tennis court.
I know.
Alright, so now they're refusing to, like, didn't they do a coating or whatever and guarantee this thing?
Yeah.
They did the coating like four years ago.
Three, three, yeah, listen, it was Matt was here. This was like a running joke.
We had a written guarantee.
Did they excavate the whole thing and put a new subbase under it?
When we build a new high school. But it is usable?
If they did do that.
It's usable.
It's not suitable. Nobody's tripping over them.
They didn't rip it out.
What the company did last year was they came and they ripped up the patches that were lifting and people could have tripped on. I only saw one patch like that this time, but it's in between the tennis courts. It's not on the playing surface itself.
I'd love to see that agreement that we went through with this, cuz I, they, they were guaranteeing this. That's why they came back. They gave us every excuse under the sun not to do it in a timely manner, three or four years ago. It's raining, it's this, it's that. Matt was here. Every excuse under the sun.
It had to be above 55 degrees.
Yeah, then they told us it was going to be, this is it, this is gonna, it's like gonna be like new. And then it cracked the next year, and it, you know, and it cracked the next year, so. And now, of course, they don't wanna come back cuz they didn't do the job right to begin with.
I think they're talking just paint, though. They're not, I mean, that can't
They put a coating. This was a coating.
But a coating can't guarantee on
Resurfaced.
Yeah, they were guarantee, they, they were actually cutting out the cracks.
They filled in the cracks.
Some new age epoxy nonsense that they, they can't stand behind, so.
It was two years ago, cuz it was every week we were laughing about.
Well, Matt was, well, actually, Matt was gone to his new job, and we were still, and it still wasn't. I think we said at one point, we can give Matt a report that the tennis court is finally, finally fixed.
Rob McNaughtie, McNaughtie was the athletic director at the time who hired the company. And that was before I started this position, and I'd been in this position for four years.
Gonna leave it right there. That's exactly what.
They didn't excavate it wide enough, deep enough.
Well, they didn't do it.
It wasn't getting
Cape and Islands did it 20 years ago. And the playing surface has only been resurfaced, just painted.
I'm actually going to say it was like 14 years ago. When we did the track, we did the tennis court, right?
Yes, and that was
So that was 14.
I was groundskeeper at the time, and I had just come over to this building in 2003, so.
I'd love to see that contract, that, cuz we paid good money to have that.
Well, the good news is, with a new high school, hopefully we'll come new fields and
Relocate it to a better
Mine, it is, it is built on a hill, so that ground is still sliding down.
That will be a need.
I wish I had all these excuses if I had an error on one of my jobs, that the customers would be giving this type of excuse. We had a contract with someone, they provided a service, they were guaranteeing a service, and they came back and repaired it the year after and admitted fault. And now, two years later, they're saying they're not answering the phone. So I'm, listen, before I get too engaged in accusing them, I'd like to see what that contract was, and we paid good money for that, and they should stand by, and they should stand by it one way or another, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring that contract.
But I'm glad to hear that it's being used, because two years ago, when we were waiting for that to, we were not using our tennis court.
That's right, that's right.
And so at least we're on the court.
Yeah, the middle core is definitely the best one, but like the crack, like you said, the cracks are evenly dispersed, so it's not like one side is worse than the other. It's not like slanted or anything. It's still flat.
So you're not tripping over them.
Yeah, it's just crack, so if the ball ends up hitting into the crack, it may bounce a different way. So not ideal, but still playable, still better than Hopedale's, which they said is unusable completely right now, so.
And in the meantime, to your point, the best-case scenario if it's a new high school, that, that tennis court would be five or six years out anyway, and that crack would be tremendously bigger by that point, so. I just want all the people accountable that promised us they were gonna fix it correctly. So, and the only thing I have to add, and this is kind of unrelated, but related. I happen to be on a parade committee in Blackstone. So Roosevelt Park on 5/23, it's a Friday. So you generally, you guys practice till 6:00, or if you have a game, you're pretty much done?
6:00 is more for when we have games. Usually, I, I emailed Parks and Rec, I forget which I told her, but I think I told her like 4:30 or 5:00. 6:00 is more just when we have games.
We were gonna tell, the Thursday, the 22nd, if the carnival was to come in, we told them after 6:00. But Friday, it will be, I don't know if you have anything Friday, the 23rd, there, there may be carnival. Figured while you were here, I would clean that one up as well.
Oh, we have an away for JV softball and no JV baseball. I can at least make a note, if we do schedule one, that makes sure it's away.
And that's just the Bay Ruth Field. They won't be using, like, if you have a softball game in the, the smaller field, that's fine.
While Dan's bringing up dates, do we have dates for your to-be-determined games for baseball? I thought there was something mentioned.
So only Cathedral, Cathedral, I'm not like banking on. They said they wanna do two games, but they're waiting on roster size. Those I don't have dates. I have a call with, hold on, let me bring up the actual.
Do we think we're going to hit, to hit our goal of 20? The goal of the max that MIAA allows is 20.
Yes.
So we wanna try to hit that goal to give a fighting chance for each team. That's why basketball was successful.
Yeah, we want them to have just as many chances as any other teams to make playoffs. So the goal is 100% for varsity to have 20 games. West Boston, right now, we only have one game scheduled with them. I have a call with her tomorrow, so I'm hoping to get a second game with her.
How many are you looking at total that are confirmed for varsity baseball?
17 right now. Yeah, so we need three more.
You do any double headers?
Not right now. We don't have any double headers scheduled.
Is that a, is that allowed in MIAA?
Yeah, I wonder.
Lights.
Yeah.
We have to go a Saturday game.
So I did hear something about the 26th. That is Memorial Day, just in case anybody wanted to know.
Is it that early?
Yeah, and I only know that cuz it's my son's birthday and it sometimes lands on Memorial Day, so.
So that's West Boston. That's when I have a call with tomorrow, so. If that's usually conflict with parents, I can see if there's another date that works.
And it would have to be away because, again, well, no, no, if it's at school, it's Roosevelt.
Yeah, that's the high school, yeah.
Yeah, Roosevelt will only be, I just gotta, Parks and Recs, I, I kinda let you guys know before I let Parks and Recs know, so I might, I might be in trouble with them too right now.
I'm not saying it's a problem. I'm just saying it's a holiday week and I don't know if everyone's around.
Just knowing that's, you know, it's my thing. I would, and, and you were brand-new into the system, so you had enough going on. I'm sure your head was probably spinning, but these schedules are all done in the fall in baseball.
Yeah.
I mean, my schedule was done before I even got to Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where all this started is when I started in July, there wasn't a fall schedule, so I had to do the fall schedule. And then there wasn't a winter schedule, so I do the, so it's all like a backlog where right now, I have a more complete fall schedule than I do for baseball, just because how it started. So the goal is by summer, everything's back to the correct cycle, so we're not catching up the whole year.
And I don't know who you let do your scheduling. I don't know if you let your coaches do it, because they're the ones that know who they wanna go play.
Yeah, I have them
Kind of team they're gonna have.
Yeah, definitely.
And they don't wanna go against the iron if they have a new team, or they don't wanna play a weak schedule if they have a bunch of veterans coming back. They're gonna want the power rankings, they're gonna wanna get after it.
Yes.
I'd let the coaches do their non-league schedule.
Collaborate, yeah.
So that they can, they can, cuz they also network and coaches know coaches.
Yes. Yeah, and I've been using Coach Manguso a lot to try and reach out to the coaches who maybe the ADs are more resistant to take the game based on our power rankings, but if they talk to the coach and the coach says, hey, I want this game, that's how we got the main art game, is Coach Manguso talk to the other coach directly. In terms of choosing games for the next schedule, at the postseason meeting with all my coaches, I have them give me a list of teams they want to play and teams they would like to avoid at all costs. And then if any other team approaches me that's not on the list, we usually discuss like, hey, do you want this game? Do you want to avoid this game? But yeah, definitely the coaches are more experienced in knowing their opponents than I would, especially as a new AD in the school.
So you're starting that for next, for the next school year?
Yes, yep.
The fall schedule's almost done. We looked at it.
Yeah, we have about like 15 games for most sports. And then hopefully I use the AD conference next week to try and connect and finish the schedule with people in person, yeah.
So Ted, to your point, and Tara to yours, hopefully that's done before. Yeah, it should be done soon.
Yeah, cuz you have a deadline to hit too for MIAA.
Yeah, April 4th is our deadline for spring.
Cuz the coaches can, can start working it right away. They can, I mean, I'm sure, I know, I know my league games are always on Monday and Wednesdays, and I can schedule my non-league games on Fridays. So I know that right across the board, so I just start hammering it away before I even and it falls right into place.
And my goal for especially baseball season, that has been the toughest to get people to agree to games, is try and get at least verbal commitments in season, say verbal commitment that we're gonna have another matchup next year. That's what I've seen other athletic directors do for the schedule for fall, so it seems to be working, at least get a verbal commitment, so we know who to reach out to.
I just wanted to add that the batting cage was installed today. The netting was put up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next to do is the girls' outfield, so. We'll get that done this week.
I've heard the baseball field looks great, so my, my, tip my cap to you guys.
Thank you. It is still kinda muddy, but we did drag it. I brought my ATV V in once again, so.
Your own?
Grounds could drag it. Our mower is still at State Line Power Equipment, waiting for a new tire tube to be installed.
Nothing's growing yet anyways. You're alright.
Yeah, so the girls' softball field looks great. That's been dragged. The boys' infield looks okay. It's still got some work to be done, the baseline.
It's just nice to come around a corner and not see weeds in the infield, but it looks great.
I checked Roosevelt today, too. It looked in pretty good condition.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so that, if there's no more questions for Scott or, or the athletic director, that will, that will conclude the athletics update as well as the facilities report. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Darlene.
Okay.
My last item is to discuss the revised health curriculum. Mary is gonna rejoin us. There's a few things that I just wanna run through with the committee and the community before Mary starts. In your packets, you received an updated slide deck that looks like a very familiar deck that we've been looking at all along. We've been using the same material, set of materials intentionally. But you see the new date, March 20th. And all of the crossouts and the red lines, all of that is on purpose so that the community and our school committee can see all the changes that have been made. And before Mary walks through those changes, we've spent a lot of time trying to find a way to kind of balance the feedback that we're getting from our community around this particular issue. We've done a few parent meetings. We've had quite a few one-on-one parent meetings from parents that did not necessarily wanna meet with a group of parents, but still wanted their voices heard. We also received some emails from families, kind of weighing in on all kinds of angles. And so, after a lot of, a lot of listening, a lot of conversation, I think we have landed in a place that would be a good balance for our community in terms of what needs to be taught as it relates to our health, our updated health frameworks, and what would be comfortable for our community, if I could kind of say it that way. And so I really appreciate this process, as challenging it has been and as time-consuming it has been, as it has been. I think it's been a good one to show a few things. Mainly that there is not a parent or a group of parents that we cannot work with. We have worked with everybody across the continuum on this particular issue. And, and I think that's important for our families to hear, because, you know, our parents may not always love the answer that they have or always love the response, but it is important that they know that we really are trying. We're listening. We're doing what we can do to respond in a really appropriate way. But also understanding that, you know, sometimes we all get kind of half a loaf, so to speak, or, or a piece of that. And that's what consensus is. That's what's coming together and working as a community. That we all, you know, kind of take a step back and say, okay, it's not exactly what I was hoping for, but I think we can make this work. I think it's something we can, you know, we can live with as we move forward, so. So I just want to thank all of our families who have been involved in that process. Um, whether it was one-on-one conversation in the, over the phone, in person, emails, the group of, you know, groups of parents that we've met with. Uh, we've met with a few. Um, definitely grateful for everybody's time, effort, and energy. Um, it shows, I think, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a really kind of hard-line position on this because I think it's important. It shows that people that have a really different perspective on things can actually come together as a group and make it work. And so there may be other higher, much higher levels of organizations that could learn a lot from us. As far as how we're able to do this on a local level and bringing people together. I'm not going, just saying, you know.
Oh, no, I, I, I mean, I agree with you. Everything starts locally, politics is local. They should all take a lesson from local, not all the time, by the way, I may not have had my best moments locally, but. I, I, just to, not to interrupt.
Please, no, no, please.
I was able to sit in on these meetings with the different groups of parents. And the parents are not that far off. And the majority of them, and their, and their, their concerns were pretty equal across the board. And, and it was a learning experience for me and, but it was a positive thing because everybody came together and aired their concerns. And I think we've, the end, the final solution was a pretty, pretty decent compromise. But there was one common interest from all parents and is interested in the students. And their interest was with their children and the students. And, and I think the district had that same interest as well.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Dan, because I think that's the, that's the tie that binds. We might disagree on a lot of things, people might demonize other people, which is unfair and untrue. Uh, and I, and I would argue that, you know, once, once we actually, once you sit down and you realize that we really are here for our kids, that's the only reason we're here, it's the only reason any of us are here. We just look at it from a different perspective. Uh, but once you try to understand that perspective, like we did through this process, you see that, like, you know what, we actually can make this work. And so with that, Mary, if you want to kind of walk us through what's here and then what the school committee received in their packets, I know they got two packets, so you'll explain that too, I'm sure.
I, yeah, I guess maybe we should start there. So, so you, the first packet that you got, um, was, there was, there was a mistake that with the high school piece that was printed. It was the older, it was the one that we had already said that we would change. So then I, I get, you got one last night, that's the one that is gonna be, um, used, not the first one that you got.
It was just the high school, that was.
Just the high schools, everything else was fine.
Can you elaborate on the change, the difference between the two for the folks at home?
So I, I actually will do that when I, when I go through. So the, um, if you look at, we, this is the new one that it says, um.
Yeah, you gotta move this, it's not connected to your computer, it's on the screen up there, so you want to use the.
Sorry.
That's right. Sometimes you forget.
I'll have to look and, all right. So we, we started to modify this. This was the one, this was the, the same one that we started on in last October. This is, so we came together, like Jason said, with different, um, different family, families and different groups. And we came, we decided, this is what everybody decided on. So we modified this in February. On. And we updated the framework goals, that was like, that was what we had to do by D E C. And these are the changes that we started to make in, in, um, grade two. So we, we were never teaching that piece anyway, um, of the accurate names, that's what we took out. And, um, this is what we added, we changed the wording. Um, and we also made it a little bit more kid-friendly. So we, um, we wrote that, we, we actually rewrote that standard. Um, and that was approved, we could, we could do that, we got that approval by D E C. So these are the, uh, the standards that we took out and we just moved them. So it's not that they're not going to be taught, but they're not going to be taught in the second grade. We changed some of the wording and, um, this is some of the wording that we changed in the standards. So to discuss the importance of loving and respect self and others. And then, um, instead of different, we replaced that with all family structures and family traditions. In fifth grade, we also took out, we, I shouldn't say take out, we moved them. So we still will be addressing them, but we moved them to, to the eighth grade.
And Mary, just so I can define the moved them, so people know what the them is.
Right, so the, yeah, so the one that is crossed out is the, is the standard that we, that we moved to the eighth grade. Uh, to explain the differences between assigned sex at birth and gender identity, that's no longer a standard in the fifth grade.
So all the gender identity materials, all of it, we moved to grade, we just moved it up to the eighth grade. So it is, it's still being taught, but it's being taught in the older grades.
Right, so grade two and grade five, it's not there. Did that require approval by D E C?
I had a conversation with their health and phys ed office and made, actually spoke with their director. And, yeah, they were very understanding of the changes. And I actually have it in writing, so that if there's an audit, when there's an audit, they can have a finding for us to say that we're not teaching what we're supposed to be.
That is, that is the concern, we really don't have to accept the framework from D E C as they. I mean, it's more about when they come in and audit us, we want a good audit rating. But if, you know, a school district does not need to accept this just because D E C says it's the framework.
What, what they would do, to your point, Matt, they'll come in and audit and they'll say, oh, we have a civil rights issue in BMR. You're not teaching any of the, the sexual identity standards. And then we say, no, 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 yes, we are, which we're teaching them in eighth grade. We're not, we're not doing them in second or third, we're doing them in eighth grade. So that we won't have that.
So it's good to have it in writing.
Right, so we have it in writing from the, from the director. So that will not be an issue.
These are the, these are the standards that are in the fifth grade. Does anybody have any questions about those before I move to the next slide? This is what we took out, what we had just explained. So there's nothing about gender identity in the fifth grade.
So fifth grade is mainly the puberty and body changes and things, it's not the sexual, sex identity.
Yes.
All of that, again, was moved to grade eight. Gender expression, all of that.
Yes, so eighth grade. These are the key outcomes that they will have, that they will know by the end of grade eight. This didn't change.
Can I ask a silly question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it might be a silly question, I don't know. By moving these from the grades to the high school, did it impact the high school curriculum?
No, that's a good question. So eighth grade already had gender identity in it anyway. So we just, um, and it was already in their curriculum, they had everything, so it, no.
I was just like, oh, no, did we just overwhelm those grades?
There was no significant changes, because it was already there. So the idea initially when this was developed was to do these kind of, they call it spiraling curriculum, so you keep coming back to it and hitting those standards.
Gotcha.
So we just are gonna teach it for the first time in eighth grade. That's a good, great question.
Yeah. So again, none of the eighth grade standards are, are different. There's a lot of them. And actually, none of the nine, the grade nine standards, nine to 10, none of those, those standards changed either.
Again, the topics were already there, right?
Right, they were already there. So these, so to your point, Matt, this is where this is. So we took out, um, the, so the issue with the, with the high school was, um, the types of videos that we were using, where they were from. So we took all of the videos out. And we only have one video, which I replaced the video, um, the puberty video. So they're all from a different, um, a different, a different organization. So we have, um, replaced all the videos. Uh, the gender, this is what we, the, the recommended changes that everybody agreed on. The gender identity content is in the grade eight. We did some curriculum revision, so we, we took out anything that had to do with advocates for youth, anything that had to do with Planned Parenthood. And we, um, we changed that. Uh, grade standard, the grade two standards, again, um, we, we changed the, the wording in that. And then the modifications and the state, again, like that Jason had said, the, this, um, this, the curriculum office has approved of this.
When we say we.
Any questions?
Yeah, when we say we took out the advocates for youth and Planned Parenthood, reference to them or the material? I, and I apologize, I said this to Jason, I, I didn't see the new packet until, so I reviewed the.
Do you want to see it?
I, I have it at home.
Oh, okay.
And so did we remove the, the material or did we remove the reference to?
So when we were in the meeting with the, with the people that wanted, she, the people that, the people that were in the meeting actually said they didn't mind the material, it was the logo.
Was it reference of the organization?
Right.
So any references to those organizations we removed?
I would still argue that the district purchased, you know, we purchased this.
No, we did not purchase it.
It's free, okay.
It's all free material, yeah.
So, but in some way they're, they're not doing it for free, right?
I'm sorry.
Advocates for Youth and Planned Parenthood doesn't put this curriculum together for free. I couldn't imagine it.
Guess it's probably a federal grant or something they got.
Yeah, they're not funded by us.
No, not funded by us.
Yeah, we didn't pay them for the services. Not buying this curriculum.
No, it was free. So only, the only thing that they had used was a, was a few, uh, a few PowerPoints. Few, and that's about it. So, and like I said, we took about, all of the videos, they're gone.
Any further discussion, any?
I'll just express, I'm still disappointed with the fact that it is Planned Parenthood. It's just not, you know, it's, it's still, the crux of it is still, and this isn't a BMR district.
Well, actually, we didn't take anything from Planned Parenthood. The only thing that we had from Planned Parenthood was a reference that took, that we took off. But none of the materials that we used, yes.
Advocates for Youth too.
Yes.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm misunderstanding a little, but, um, that's fine.
Well, I would, I, I would.
Sorry, I do appreciate the immense amount of work that was done in, you know, understanding the concerns on both sides. Uh, me personally, I have friends on both sides, I, you know, who, you know, I care about and, you know, work with their children. Um, so, you know, it was really tough for me to, to understand both sides, and I'm glad we did. I'm glad that we, we've all had these discussions and were able to come up with this. So thank you, Dr. Calco, thank you, Mary, for, you know, understanding that and putting all of this together. It took a lot of time, um, so.
It was worth it.
I can't say thank you enough, so, thank you.
How far behind are we on delivering? Um, were there kids that missed the curriculum in the high school because of the way the PE health?
Well, so when I, when I met with the high school teachers, that, they will get it. So the way that, because they, like, because it's a semester type of a thing, whatever they didn't get, they'll get it in the next grade. That's how they do it.
Okay.
So no, they won't miss anything. And fifth grade wasn't gonna start their, this part of the curriculum until after April vacation.
Okay, okay.
And there's still the opt-in and opt-out.
Yes, there's still the opt-in and opt-out.
They'll be, they'll be reissued the opt-in and opt-out.
Oh, yes, yep. The parent letters are there and the alternate, the alternative lessons are in there as well.
So our families at home understand they still can do that.
Correct.
Yeah, they can. Actually, they'll have to, or the, or the kid will be opted out if they don't opt-in.
Yeah.
Well, I'll also add, I appreciate the, the hard work that went into this with you and, and the superintendent and, and the team. It wasn't, you know, and, and.
And all the teachers.
That's right. And, and what is, this pause was put on on February 11th. It's March 20th. Like, the turnaround to meet with all the parents, the different sessions, the groups. And there was some very robust debate in those meetings and, and concerns. So to turn it around in, in a short period of time and, and getting that, those groups of people in agreement, because essentially this was presented with, to, to the groups.
Yes, yep.
And, and the consensus was, with these, with the different groups was in the agreement with the second and fifth was too concerning. And eighth was, you know.
It was okay, yes.
It was okay, so. And essentially, personally, that's where I had stood at the beginning of this with some other, you know, concerns that were addressed. But it, it was, it was a monumental effort and you, you guys put a lot of work into it. And, and the results speak for themselves, so. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the amended health, revised health curriculum.
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, stand by, one, two, three, four, five. Let the record reflect, it's five to two, approved. Thanks again for all your work.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right. Moving on to the business office. Thank you, Mary.
Joe. Yes, you're up. In your packet you have the budget journal entries that have been made to date since our last meeting.
Just a second, we gotta find it. It's all the way at the bottom.
All of the highlighted items except for one are related to preparation of building our inventories and preparing for the FY '26 budget with supplies. So all that is, is taking money from projected surplus lines, moving them into the supply lines that we're making those purchases from. Where's purchases from, looks like this, Matt. Okay.
There's a lot of paper again.
Uh, the one, the, um, journal, uh, budget journal entry 139 that is not related to that is just the setup of a new IEP grant, um, to set the budget up for that grant. So you'll see that's different. And there are two items that are not highlighted. One is to, it's, it's within the same function code, but where had to move some funding to the correct line to do, pay for the licensing for the Backnet software at MES that had expired. So that should be, hopefully when they come out, it'll be up and running. And the other one was again to, we had a budget amendment for one of our grants. It was just an entry to go ahead and put that amendment into the system. And that is it for that.
My glasses just broke.
Those are the ones not highlighted?
There's two that I highlighted, there's budget, the first one, 136, and I think it's on page two.
140.
Budget, uh, journal entry 140. I only highlight the ones that have an effect of, um, the, the function code.
Okay.
Because those are the more important, you know, moving within the function code isn't, is, is bigger an issue.
All right, any other questions as far as the budget journal entries? I'll take a motion to approve budget journal entries as presented by Joe. Motion by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
And we're back to the EV chargers. I am pleased to announce though that we've, we've met with East Coast Renewable Energy. That was the referral we got from, uh, from Blackstone. That's what they use for their chargers. And they came out and did a tour of the district, a review of the district. And were able to put in, it's basically two port, two two-port level two chargers here at the middle school and one at the complex. It, the cost of that is the, each for, for $49,877, which is 100% covered by incentives and grants that are in place. So there is zero cost to the district. Uh, you have a copy of the actual proposals.
We have a way of charging for that electric use.
Say it again.
We're going to charge for the electric.
Yep, that's what I'll, when we get this, we have two options here. We, we can have complete ownership, um, and it comes with a three-year warranty and three-year licensing. We have complete ownership, we do whatever we want, we can charge whatever we want, however we want to set that up. Um, and we, we, maybe we'll do it by time, whatever the school committee feels is necessary. I recommend that we at least charge for enough to cover the electric, electric cost if we want to discount it or whatever. We'll get to that. Uh, the other option is they, the company can maintain ownership and they'll do a profit sharing with us. The downside to that, as far as I'm concerned, is we lose control of what's being charged, how it's being charged and how it's being managed. So while this is dealing with that, no cost to us, I'm just looking for approval to sign the proposal and start to. I'm just looking for approval to sign the proposal and start to move on the installation of these two locations. They are going to come back out and take a look at MES and the high school, again, a little bit more complicated. They're not, we're not sure because of the trenching that's involved and the work that's involved, if they can do it underneath that $50,000 threshold, but at least we can start with the ones that we know will be free.
With the work that's proposed for the high school, why would we put in new charging stations there?
It is movable, the equipment's movable. So if we were to relocate it with the building of the new building...
Electric there is the most expensive part.
And it may be that we don't.
It doesn't cost us anything, that's one thing.
It may be that we, maybe we don't do it. It depends on what they even come back with.
Or do it now while it's covered, five years with a new building, it might not be a...
Yeah, we don't know what the incentive is.
Is there any contract that goes along with the purchase?
Say that again.
Is there a contract that goes along with the purchase? I guess I mean, like, I think I asked this before, a contract for if it needs to be fixed or something needs to be done. Is there a contract that goes with the purchase that will cost the district?
I'll have to, once I do the proposal, I can find out what that agreement is.
You mean besides the three-year warranty?
I mean, besides this three-year warranty, if we need maintenance, is there like a contract for maintenance, repair, replacement, movement?
So that's the two sides of it, right? So if we own it, we own it. We can charge for what we want, and when it comes to repairs, after three years, we own it.
That's what I'm wondering.
Where profit sharing, they own it, we, they maintain it, but they charge, and then we get a share of that profit.
It's like solar panels, it's like the same.
Same idea.
If you want to own your solar panels at home or you want to, you know, share, co-share it.
And I guess my question with, I think, to follow up with you is now, we're approving the installation tonight, is that's what you're asking us?
Yes, we're approving the move forward.
And so they'll install it even without, whether or not they're knowing they're going to own it, or is that a separate agreement?
Totally up to us, they said. We can make that decision anytime we want. And we can change. At the end of three years, I did ask them, what is that licensing, what happens to the licensing now? What if the licensing expires in three years? What do we do from there? And there are two options at that point, too. We can, we can offer them to just take 10% of whatever revenue comes in, and they keep it up to date, or we can pay for it outright, which is about $500 a year right now.
What is the license for?
It's the licensing for operating, I guess there's some communication that happens. You've got the app that you can set your pricing, your scheduling for. There's some technology, I can't answer to exactly what it is.
So that doesn't come with this. This is just installation of the product.
It comes with three years of the licensing.
So if we were to, just if we were to approve this, there's other costs that may possibly incur once these are installed. Am I correct in understanding that?
In three years.
After three years, but if we don't, how do I say this? If we don't work with them on the fees and we own it to do the fees, then how does the app work?
We would maintain.
Do we have to pay for that app?
We would maintain that, yeah. Which would be including the cost of charging your vehicle.
Do you know how it works in Black, at Town Hall? Are you charging?
I think it's option, no, we're in control of the town's control, the town owns it. So same thing.
It's been there for a few years.
I was just going to ask that.
They're beyond.
The installer gets, so they put it in for free because they're getting the credits. They're getting paid to...
Right.
They're getting the credits for it. And the town, the town will have a fee, whatever, I don't have an electric vehicle.
Is the town charging?
I use my debit card.
Is it paying?
It's charging right now. I have to swipe my debit card at Town Hall and then...
Right. And so whatever that is, but for a kilowatt or whatever, minutes or however that works, but the town, the town is charging.
So is the town making...
We didn't do it to make money. So we'll have a discount rate for employees or...
I only wondered if it was going to be like, we're charging, and then that money that we're charging will go into a fund that will go for repairs and whatnot. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Funny you said that, because I was going to recommend that when we start, if we approve this and we move forward, any revenue should go into its own special revenue fund for maintaining this. And then we can decide in three years when we see what the revenue stream looks like. Do we want to just buy the licensing every year outright with that revenue, or do we want to do a 10% back to the company and never have to worry about the licensing again? I mean, those are all things we, I don't think we even have to worry about until the three-year mark, from what they're telling me.
At 10%, do they set the rates?
No, if we own it, we set the rates.
Well, I'm talking, the 10% of the profit or, we still set the rate for that.
Yeah.
So to give you a sense, when I use the Blackstone, which is what I'm doing right now. I tap my card and plug it in, about, just about half a charge. It's usually about 16 to 18 bucks. So, and that's about half a charge.
Does Blackstone own it?
I use the Town Hall one.
We do.
And I don't have the discount.
You own it, you don't share the profit, I guess is what I'm going to say. Or you don't, so you guys determine the rate? The town determines the rate? Okay, that's what I was wondering. Because now I'm wondering, does the rate go up if they're determining it? You know what I'm saying?
And we have the, from what I understand, it's versatile enough where you can set a rate for a period of time, maybe during the day for our employees and visitors, and you can actually change the rate for after hours, for just general public. All of these, keep it the same, I mean, whatever, but we have that flexibility.
Do we have any idea how many staff members actually drive electric vehicles that might be able to take advantage of this?
Like, is one going to be enough at each...
Oh, there's two.
Or are they going to do one?
Or is one too many?
I thought two, one in each.
No, two dual ports. I know of two.
They must have 100 chargers, zero trucks charging.
Yeah, so you, I got to say, like, there's like two gas pumps, right? But they're two, with four pumps, two pedestals.
And nobody can park in but those electric cars.
An incentive to go electric.
We should locate them remotely, so.
I mean, it's no cost to us. I'll make a motion that we approve the...
I second it.
The proposal.
All right, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Ted to approve the EV chargers for the complex and the middle school.
Yes.
Any further discussion? I'll just add that there was a comment or a question on how much the ones we used in Blackstone last time we discussed this, and so, and maybe it was you, Chuck, but, so I followed up, so, and so out of the, when the question was asked, out of the last 90 days, it was used 60 of those last, over those 90 days. So the town of Black...
Sixty, six-zero.
Six-zero. So a lot of times it's overnight and, but I also look at this as opening up, you know, we always have an issue with transportation from here to the high school, this, the grants they have right out, out right now for, and I think I sent you the information, Joe, for these Ford Transit vans in the state of Massachusetts, they're tremendous, like, the electric vehicles, fully electric, bouncing from school to school? I mean, I wouldn't take it on a road trip to Martha's Vineyard, but bouncing from school to school is ideal. So I mean, we cut down on the fuel costs and everything else. It's an option, so that's, that's why I...
Grants for that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the grant that I read right now is that they pay 50% of the cost for the electric, a fully electric vehicle.
Five-zero.
Five-zero.
And it comes with the charger.
But I get, you know, we got to apply, I got to get some information together and try to see if that'll work for us.
On the staffing side, there's about six people.
Okay.
Thereabouts, and eyeballing, because you know, when you pull in, you know what's electric and what isn't, so there's probably about six people. So there's, what, on this proposal, there's two port, like, there's two chargers on...
There's two dual pedestals at each of the locations, so four.
So four, okay.
Four per school, but not the high school though.
Not yet. They're going to come back out and reevaluate what, if that's possible, because again, if it's going to cost money, I said I don't even want to talk to you about it.
So that feels right for what we have for...
Originally, the high school, if I recall, was going to be in the staff parking lot, and it was going to have to be carried up and over.
Yeah, we're not going to. It all comes down to that trenching, and that's the biggest cost, I guess.
These incentives and rebates won't be available forever, right? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
They're not, like, it's not, okay.
And the feasibility of the other two schools is no cost to the town, right? When they come back to the high school and the...
They'll put a proposal together and we'll see what that...
Yeah, it's free.
So it's free, is that proposal?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, unanimous.
Thank you.
We have to officially, oh, sorry, Joe, Joe, this is your, I keep jumping on any of these agenda items.
Computer donations, I don't...
That was from the, Eric presented to us last meeting?
The committee just has to approve it. It just takes up the donations.
I don't have the list of what those donated items were, but...
He presented a list to us, Eric.
He discussed it at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the...
I move to accept the computer donations from Eric.
It's Ted all over it. Motion by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Matt, was that you? Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion?
Just, it was all sorts of different, it was computers, it was easels, keyboards, it was, and it was newer stuff.
A lot of that's been scoffed up already. Even the easels, like, even the, which kind of felt random.
Oh, boy.
Because he brought all this technology and these, gone. The 13 easels are gone.
Oh, like, just like art easels.
Well, yeah, but the teacher, I mean, it's gone. The people have already scooped up the material. The easels weren't faster than...
If we don't.
So we really appreciate, really appreciate him doing that.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, I think. Eric, I stand, he's a member of our, the town of Blackstone's Conservation Commission. Well, with your brother, your uncle, Matt, Mike, he's running for selectman. Matt's giving me the evil eye tonight. I'm giving him a hard time.
That's my school committee forum.
I'm going to get payback on this one, or paid back. Vote to approve FY25 student activity funds.
So as you know, the new policy was put into place for the student activity funds. It's been restructured, everything's set up. All the activity is now running through our warrant process in the system, the bank account's in place. In the policy, it says we would come to the school committee at the beginning of every year to approve the student activity funds that are set up for that fiscal year. I'm just asking to do this now mid-year because now that it's set up, we have a definite list, and there's three accounts at Millville Elementary, seven at the middle school, and 15 at the high school. And I'm just looking, I'm just asking for approval to continue to utilize those funds, those accounts for student activities for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then I'll come back at the beginning of next year again.
Oh, thank you, Joe.
I move to approve the fiscal year 25 student activity funds.
Second.
Motion by Ted, seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous, the ayes have it. School committee forum.
Matt.
I do know that there has been some confusion out there with the signs around town. I don't live in Blackstone, can't run for Blackstone Selectman, so just to clear up any sort of confusion, I am not up for reelection this year. I have till next year to kick me out, so just wanted to make that abundantly clear. It's not me.
Well, that's unfortunate, because we would have loved to have you.
Can't handle me.
I want to say something.
Tara.
Ted will miss you.
I had that on my...
Oh, no, I'd be...
I'll say, if I can have a quick 30 seconds, I just want to say, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with everybody in this room. I'm very proud of this district. I've really enjoyed being a member of it. I believe in this district. This district educated my three children. The oldest, this is where, this is not about her, this is about the district and the people that are part of this district. Graduated last year, cumulati from college. She's now a registered nurse in the cardiac unit in a hospital. The second one, my second child is president's list every semester at college right now,